Welcome, everybody, to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, December 21st, 2021, time being 6:30 PM. I call this meeting to order. And I would just like to let everybody know that tonight is the first night that we are going live with our meeting. But the meetings will still be recorded and posted to YouTube as usual. The first item on our agenda is approval of meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion that the board vote to approve the minutes of the meeting dated March 16th, 2021.
Do you want to make the motion, Norm?
I'm abstaining because I wasn't there.
Oh, that's right, okay. I haven't had a chance to review them yet. So, I don't know. Dennis, do you want to make a motion?
I did not have a chance to review them. I've been in and out of the hospital all week.
Okay.
We will... Do you think you can review the minutes in 15 minutes, or?
I can try.
Is that giving it too much?
Yeah, I probably could.
Squeezing in too much?
Yeah, no, I probably could.
Okay. We're gonna recess for 15 minutes. We will come back to the meeting at 6:45.
Okay.
Okay, time being 6:50 PM, we are going to come back to the meeting. Again, first item on our agenda is approval of meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion that the board vote to approve the minutes of the meeting dated March 16th, 2021.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll vote yes. That is four yeses and one abstention. Those meetings are passes... Those meeting minutes are passes written. Second, I will entertain a motion that the board vote to approve the minutes of the meeting dated April 6th, 2021.
I make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's four affirmatives, one abstention. April 6th, meeting minutes pass as written. The next, I will entertain a motion that the board vote to approve the minutes of the meeting dated April 20th, 2021.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That is four affirmative, one abstention. April 20th passes as written. I'll entertain a motion that the board vote to approve the minutes of the meeting dated May 5th, 2021, as written.
I make that motion.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's four affirmatives, one abstention. May 5th, 2021 passes as written. I will entertain a motion that the board vote to approve the minutes of the meeting dated June 1st, 2021, as written.
I make that motion.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll vote yes. That's four affirmative, one abstention. June 1st, 2021 passes as written. I will entertain a motion that the board vote to approve the minutes of the meeting dated June 15th, 2021, as written.
I make that motion.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
I will vote yes. That is four affirmative, one abstention. June 15th, 2021 passes as written. Next item on the agenda is to appoint the town clerk, Michelle Jenkins.
Mr. Chairman, before you this evening, I am recommending the appointment of town clerk to be voted upon by this board and to be jointly recommended by your board and myself to approve Michelle Jenkins as our town clerk. As you know, prior to my coming before you for this recommendation, we had an interim town clerk position posted, mainly because in the middle of COVID, it was so difficult to find a town clerk. And we also had a residency requirement that has since been removed by the townspeople and by the Massachusetts General Court. We're not here to kind of go over the past, but I do want to reaffirm the qualifications of our town clerk, who at that time had expressed the willingness to help the town out and to become in the future our town clerk. During the past year, if you go back on Michelle's professional record, she has over 20 years of professional town clerk experience, particularly in elections divisions. She has done an incredible job in modernizing not only our elections, but has also done an incredible job on bringing technology and the clerk's office into the 21st century. She is, I think, sitting here with two members of the clerk's office who will attest to the major improvements that have taken place that I'm aware of. Everything from creating an efficient way of being able to retrieve data, not only for vital statistics that are very important to families, but also in the areas of permitting and also in the areas of being able to track major areas of responsibility, whether it's conflicts of interest requirements by the state and the Secretary of State's office, all the way down the line to being able to improve the effectiveness of the office. I'm here to recommend her. It is a joint appointment. It's one of the few joint appointments, one of the last only joint appointments, I think, that we have in terms of a professional position. She's here today. She had put together a presentation of all the changes that she has implemented and has gone above and beyond in being able to attain in a little over a year's period of time. And I think that we would be very good to be able to have her into perpetuity. So, I would make a recommendation to this board today that we appoint Michelle Jenkins as our permanent town clerk and remove the interim status. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Thank you, members of the board. Yes, as Jen was saying, I wholeheartedly believe that, you know, that I should... I would like to be appointed the town clerk. I want to continue and finish all of the projects and that I've started. I've brought the, you know, the office up to the 21st century, modernized it. I have a great team, and we've accomplished a great deal in the past year, and I want to keep going with that and finish everything that I have started.
Thank you. You've done quite the amount of work in a short period of time, modernizing that office. There's still some more to go, but like you said, it's on your to-do list. You're working very hard. Your office has been very busy over this last year with all the elections that we've had, and then, you know, call for all the additional work that's been going on as well. So, thank you for all you've done. With that being said, I would entertain a motion that the board appoint Michelle Jenkins as town clerk.
Norm, you want to make that motion?
Sure, I'd make a motion that we would appoint Michelle Jenkins as our permanent town clerk.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I'll entertain a vote.
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes as well. That's five in the affirmative, zero...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Michelle. The next item on our agenda this evening is a open meeting law complaint filed by Casey Fleming, received on December 14th, 2021. The complaint has to do with a backlog of meeting minutes. Mr. Fleming's recommendation is to approve the backlog of meeting minutes and timely approve minutes going forward. I would say that this evening, we... Mr. Fleming had listed some of the meeting minutes that we approved this evening. Our professional staff has worked tirelessly since receiving this open meeting law complaint to make sure that we begin to catch up on our backlog. Any discussion from the board on this matter? Let's see. I would like to... Let's see. I'd like to entertain a motion that we set a date of January 11th for the remaining meeting minutes that were not approved this evening. And moving forward, that the Board of Selectmen Office approve minutes in a timely manner as stated within the open meeting law, which would be by the next meeting or within 30 days, whichever is sooner. Nope. Three meetings. I apologize. I amend that to three meetings. Should I repeat that motion?
I'm good with it.
Okay, okay.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on this matter? I'll take a vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. We will also... Let's see. I think we have to also notify the Attorney General of our resolution. of our resolution of this open meeting law complaint. So I would entertain a motion that we notify the Attorney General of the decision that we have made.
Is that going to be a letter from you to the Attorney General, or are you going to direct someone else to do it? Who do you want to write it?
I'll write it, I'll write the letter.
I make that motion then.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And I will vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. The next item on our agenda is a change of manager for the Oxford VFW Post 5663. They're appointing Richard P. Hines as manager. Is Mr. Hines here this evening? Would you like to come forward and have a seat?
My name's Rich Hines and I was recently elected to be the new commander of the post. And with the outgoing commander leaving his position, we decided to change the lecker license over to my name as well for the time while I'm the commander, so to stay my responsibility.
How long is that, is that an elected position?
It's an elected position, but it's not something that we change every year. So, you know, it's likely I'm going to be in this position for a while.
Okay.
And, you know, we'll see how things go, you know, maybe I'll continue, we'll, we'll see how long this goes, you know.
Okay.
But in the meantime, we're trying to build this organization back up to something, you know, substantive, you know, doing good work for the community and, you know, kind of like what these organizations are supposed to be.
Well, congratulations on your promotion to commander.
Thank you.
Board, any further discussion? I would entertain a motion that the board vote to approve the change of manager to Richard P. Hines as requested by Oxford VFW Post 5663. Contingent upon the payment of the fees associated with the amendment, query authorization, vote of the entity of the board, the Oxford VFW Post 5663. Proof of citizenship, satisfactory results under the Town of Oxford Civil Finger Printing Bylaw and Policy, sorry, Bylaw and Policy, and any and all other supporting documentation required by the board or ABCC and the application be forwarded to the ABCC as required for their approval.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And I will vote yes, that's five in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is change of officers for Global Montello Group Corporation, doing business as Honey Farms Number 2759.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is John Aida McDermott Quilton Miller, located at 28 State Street in Boston. Here in behalf of Global Montello Group Corp., this is the Honey Farms right around the corner on Sutton Avenue. We're here for an application for a change of the officer positions. It's came recently on account of some resignations, retirements, and one untimely death. So the applicant, the licensee here is updating those officer positions with new appointments. Would you like to know the specific changes? I can summarize this pretty quickly, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, so no change to the president position. The treasurer position is changing from Gregory Hanson to Margaret Nijkrash. The secretary position is changing from Edward Fannuel to Sean Gary. The executive vice president position is going away, it's not going to be replaced. And the CFO is changing from Daphne Foster to Gregory Hanson, who was the former treasurer. Other than that, all the other officer positions are the same. There's no operational changes and there's no change in the ownership of that entity.
Okay, thank you. Board members? Any comments? I'll entertain a motion that the board vote to approve the change of officers for Global Montello Group Corporation, doing business as Honey Farms Number 2759, as requested contingent upon the submission of any and all documentation required by the town and/or the ABCC and the application packet be submitted to the ABCC as required for their approval.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes, that's five in the affirmative.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a donation acceptance for Oxford Community Center.
Mr. Chairman, just so that you know, Shelley Lambert, who is a director for OCC, who had a major role in organizing our holiday tree lighting on December 5th, they had offered a lot of entertainment value to the residents that joined and many people came up and requested, can we make a donation? And so at that particular event, there were people who were coming up and putting in an elf hat and there were total donations of $206. And she is asking the board to formally accept those.
Board members? I will entertain a motion that the board vote to accept donations in the amount of $206 in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and are to be deposited into the Oxford Community Center Donation Fund.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? I'll take a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And I will vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. I'll give it a moment.
You don't want to run out and?
It's one of my, one of my favorite noises.
Yeah.
Next item on our agenda is donation acceptance request submitted by Veterans Agent.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I know that Veterans Agent is not here this evening, he's attending to a family illness, but he did ask for the board to take up consideration of a $50 donation made by Shirley D. Blanchard in memory of a loved one. You know, she, it is her nephew, the veteran Donald Jermaine, who recently passed away. And so I'd ask that the vote for the acceptance of that donation be named in the memory of veteran Jermaine.
Board members? I would entertain a motion that the board vote to accept the $50 donation from Shirley D. Blanchard to the Veterans Service Office in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. Next item on our agenda is the annual Class 1 license renewals. Class 1 licenses include Ajax Engineering Corp., PO Box 690 Oxford, CRW Corp., doing business as Wood CRW, 65 Lester Street, North Oxford, LBI Motorsports Incorporated, 3 Harland Drive, Oxford, MHQ Incorporated, 19 Industrial Park East, Oxford, Environmental Equipment Sales and Service LLC, 9 Pioneer Drive, North Oxford, New England Choppers, 70 Old Webster Road, in Oxford. I would entertain a motion that the board vote to approve Class 1 licenses as read into the record for calendar year 2022, contingent upon the payment of the license, proof of workers, compensation insurance, revenue enforcement and protection atta-
You got it, attestation, you almost had it.
Attestation, fire inspection, state workers' compensation affidavit, business certificate if required, emergency contact form, payment of taxes and compliance with and satisfactory result of the requirements of the Town of Oxford Civil Finger Printing Bylaw and Policy.
I made that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 I will vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. Annual Class 2 License Renewals. Class 2 licenses include Car Company, 184 Southbridge Road, North Oxford, The Auto Ranch, 114 Main Street, Oxford, Bonnet's Automotive Incorporated, 456 Main Street, Oxford, Farrar Auto Body, 204 Main Street, Oxford, Dudley Diesel Service Incorporated, 28 Industrial Park East, Oxford, GNP Enterprises Incorporated, doing business as Jay's Auto, 217 Main Street, Oxford, Shagru Auto Sales, PO Box 45, Oxford, NU Central Mass Auto Auction LLC, 12 Industrial Park East, Oxford, Oxford Auto Sales Incorporated, 176 Southbridge Road, North Oxford, TNT Auto Sales, 95 Southbridge Road, North Oxford, Reggie's, 101B Main Street, Oxford, Townline Auto, 135 Federal Hill Road, Oxford, M&amp;M Auto Body, 7 Industrial Park West, Oxford, Two Jacks Auto Sales, 127 Main Street, Oxford, Buckley Auto Center LLC, 381 Main Street, Oxford, PreAuctionPenn.com, 1 Harland Drive, Environmental Equipment Sales and Services LLC, 9 Pioneer Drive, North Oxford, Advanced Wheels of Tech Incorporated, 6 Boulder Parkway, North Oxford. I would entertain a motion that the board vote to approve Class 2 licenses as read into the record for calendar year 2022, contingent upon the payment of the licenses, proof of workers, compensation insurance, revenue enforcement and protection attestation, fire inspection, state workers' compensation affidavit, business certificate if required, emergency contact form, payment of taxes and compliance with the satisfactory result of the requirements of the Town of Oxford Civil Finger Printing Bylaw and Policy.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
The motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? I will call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. Next item on our agenda is annual Class 3 License Renewals. Class 3 licenses include Farrar Used Auto Parts, 204 Main Street, Oxford, Revolve Limited LLC, 11 Town Forest Road, Oxford. I would entertain a motion that the board vote to approve Class 3 licenses as read into the record for calendar year 2022, contingent upon the payment of the license, proof of workers, compensation insurance, revenue enforcement and protection attestation, fire inspection, state workers' compensation affidavit, business certificate if required, emergency contact form, payment of taxes and compliance with and satisfactory results of the requirements of the Town of Oxford Civil Finger Printing Bylaw and Policy.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. Next item on the agenda is Selectmen's Community Announcements. Vice Chair Lamarche, or, sorry, LeBlanc, the other L-word.
The other L-word, yeah. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to offer a sincere congratulations to Sam Zostent. Sam is the newest Eagle Scout in Oxford. He, I actually participated in a, before you get, before you get your Eagle Scout approval, you have to do a roundtable with people in the community and some higher-ups within the Boy Scouts. So I had the pleasure of sitting at that about a week and a half ago and actually saw him get his Eagle Scout approval. So I just wanted to say congratulations for his project. He did the library mailboxes and he worked with the Town Manager's Office and the DPW. And actually, this is the second Eagle Scout for this family. His brother Max actually did it two, three years ago. So I just wanted to say congratulations again to the Zostents. He did a great job and this community is very lucky to have this troop who has done so much community work for us. So, thank you very much and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Oh, that's.
I have nothing other than wishing everybody a happy and safe holiday season.
Thank you. Selectman Lamarche?
Well, I, I got together for a little community, get-together, Christmas get-together and I, there were quite a few residents from the town and they were very, very happy with the look of the common, with the trees all decorated. And they also made comments that they liked the new sign, it really looks spiffy. So I just wanted to present that to the board. And I also would wish everybody a very merry and blessed Christmas and a very good New Year.
Thank you. Selectwoman Triana?
I just want to say, if we actually end up getting the freezing rain that we're supposed to get tomorrow, to be safe in your travels to the DPW, be safe in your travels, making the roads safe for the rest of the residents. I know you'll do an outstanding job as you always do. And to everyone in the community, however you celebrate, happy holidays.
Thank you. And that's all I really have as well, is just happy holidays to everyone and, you know, be safe out there. That completes Selectmen announcements. The next item on the agenda is an executive session per Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2. Vote to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel for the conduct, sorry, to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, i.e. the town manager. I would entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen goes into executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, and only comes out for the purpose of a German.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a roll call vote. Vice Chair LeBlanc?
Yes.
Yes.
Secretary LeBlanc?
Yes.
Selectman Lamarche?
Yes.
And Selectwoman Triana?
Yes.
And Chairman Daniels is a yes, that's five in the affirmative. We are now in executive session.